Hey, is everybody, looks like everybody is here.
Yeah.
Okay. Amazing. Got it. Okay, today is August 16th, 2023. This is a council work session and is open to the public via Zoom. Because this is a work session, there will be no public comment and no decisions will be made by the council. I'm calling this work session to order at 2 o'clock. We want to welcome all the citizens who are joining us and thank you for your commitment to our city. The agenda for today's meeting includes an update from the Haylen Bay State Park. Ben Cox, the Senior Project Manager for the Oregon Parks and Recreation, is he still going to be here? Leila?
Tracy Johnson, Tracy Johnson is here.
Tracy Johnson, okay. And then there will also be a discussion on revenue diversification, which will be led by Ms. Mon, our city manager. So is Tracy here and ready to proceed?
I am.
Ah, there you are. Thanks.
Sorry.
Thanks for joining us today, Tracy. We'll turn, turn the discussion over to you then.
Okay, thank you. So hi, everyone, I was here a few months ago, perhaps six. My name is Tracy Johnson. I'm Construction Project Manager with Oregon Parks and Recreation and I am working on the Haylen Bay State Park projects. Also, I think Deborah had asked a question if Ben was going to be joining us. Ben is here as well, so he's involved, heavily involved with the planning for the projects that we have moving forward and also obviously runs the show out there, so he can answer specific questions related to that if they arise. So I honestly, I don't quite remember when I was here last, but we were pretty early in the stages of design at that time. So at this point, we have completed a wetland delineation for the areas of the park that are expected to be impacted by development that's proposed through the GO bond project. That report has been submitted to the Department of State Lands and the Army Corps of Engineers and it's in final review. We also have been working on archaeological investigations at the park, primarily associated with the areas that we're planning to propose work, but also using this opportunity to try to get a little bit more information about other known historic resources that are in the park because we'll have, we have the archaeologists out on the ground and we're just trying to make sure that we get a better understanding of what we have going on out there, which I'm sure a few of you know is a fair amount. So that work is ongoing and will be, the Phase One survey for archaeology will be extending through, through the next nine months or so. And then also during construction, anywhere where we have construction, we will have archaeological monitoring on the ground during ground disturbing activities in the event that something is encountered. And then as far as project work, we, the first phase of project that we're working on that's associated with the GO bond and it's sort of partially funded by GO bond and partially funded by other funding, but that is the staff housing project. So as I'm sure many of you know, staff or workforce housing is a serious concern at the coast and it's a concern that affects our operations at the park. So that was one of our priorities that we wanted to advance as quickly as possible so that we could get more staff on the ground at this location. So we completed design for that work over the winter and we had a public bidding process earlier this summer and we've just completed negotiations and issued a notice of intent to award for a contractor. And so that work should be moving forward, hopefully within the next month. So we'll be starting the site development work for that. We have secured the majority of the permits that we need for that project. The buildings that will be built for that, for the, that'll be individual, one-person cabins that we'll be building, going to be building probably four to six cabins associated with this phase of work. And those will be built under a separate contract and we're getting the final building permits. We're working with Tillamook County for that and then we'll be moving forward with building those shortly after the site development work is completed. The second phase of work that's associated with the GO bond projects is the utility renovations. So those are the bulk of the work that we'll be doing at the Haylen over the next few years. So we're in the design phase for that work right now. There's a lot of assessment of existing utilities and existing demand going on because a lot of our systems at this park are very old, they go back to the seventies and they're beyond their reasonable lifespan and need to be updated. Plus what we're seeing is, you know, in the park, the RV types and the uses that they require are very different than what was needed at the time that the park was originally developed. So we're really trying to upgrade our system so that we can provide the best experience for the users and our visitors. We've been meeting with the Haylen Bay Wastewater Agency. We've met with them and discussed some of our projects with them. We've also met with City of Manzanita Public Works Director to talk about our water service because while we're not in the city limits, we are served by city water. And we've also met with the fire department and so we're working to make sure that we're coordinating with all the applicable agencies so that everyone understands our proposed work and that we're complying with what works with everyone else. And the last phase that's likely to be funded through the GO bonds projects is going to be repaving of the entry road into the park off of Gary. And that's probably going to be, so I should talk about timing a little bit, let me back up for a second. So the Phase One housing, as I said, that one is going to be moving forward for construction this fall and winter. The utility renovation will be in the design phase, probably through next spring. And then we'll be going out to public bid for that and we're intending to do the majority of the construction work for that over the winter of fall 2024 to winter 2025. And the goal with that is to not take the campground offline during the busy season. We're also hoping to phase the work so we won't have the campground completely shut down during that period, but we will have probably a portion of it shut down. Two or three camp loops will be closed while we're doing utility renovations on those and then we'll flip and open those up and then close the others to proceed with that work. And then the repaving of the entry road is likely to be later in 2025 or early 2026. Other projects that are sort of, we're advancing through the GO bonds, but probably will not have adequate funding to proceed with in the near term are a camping cabin, which was something that was included in the original, in the, probably in the most recent master plan, although the location has been pulled closer to the existing campgrounds. And then we would like to ultimately replace and relocate our existing dump station to make it a little bit, to improve circulation to get in and out of it because it's kind of awkwardly located. And with that, that will likely result in relocation of our existing hiker biker camp and perhaps addition of some tent camping. And so those, those developments will all be included in a land use application that we're going to submit to the county. And so because we're making some, well, there's a two-part situation there. So the master plan is a little bit older than 10 years, which the county requires master plans to be updated or the plan on file to be less than 10 years old. And so we will be submitting a land use application that captures some of these adjustments to site locations for some of our existing facilities so that it's up to date with the county. And then that allows us to, over the next 10-year period, once that approval has been received, it'll allow us to move forward with those projects as funding becomes available. And the only other project that was originally identified as part of the GO bond funding is renovations to the boat ramp. And for that, we'd like to renovate the existing parking lot and improve circulation and pavement condition on that. We would like to add an overflow parking area because we get a lot of use and our parking lot is not adequate for the demand. And also potentially some renovations or an additional dock. That likely is a project that, that will be included also with the land use application and it's a project that would likely be happening within a five or 10-year horizon, but it has more complicated environmental permitting associated with it and we'd be looking for grants and partners to help fund it because it's a pretty expensive undertaking. So that's my update, I think that covers most of the bases, but open for questions.
Um, I had one, Tracy, on, on Phase Two. Is there any, has there been any consideration given to an electric car charging station?
So that is a good question. So what we're planning on doing with this phase is primarily electrical upgrades to the camp loop. So currently, most of the services in the campground are 30 amp and so we'll be upgrading them to 50 amp. And in most cases, within the campgrounds, we usually assume that an electric car will be able to charge from the park mate in the campsite. And even, you know, usually, well, I guess we haven't talked too much about whether or not we would provide electric vehicle charging stations at the day use. It's not something that's a high demand and what we found in some of our other campgrounds is if there were to be a day use person, visitor that needed charging, we usually can accommodate that by getting them into a campsite to, to charge.
Good. No. Are there any other questions from council?
Tracy, I got a question for you.
Sure.
You mentioned the, first, thanks for the update. And you mentioned that there was an archaeologist there that found anything? Is there anything of interest that our community would like to know about?
Well, unfortunately, I can't share a lot on the archaeology because it is classified information. It's top secret and generally speaking, I don't even know the answers yet. It's, it's very heavily protected because of concerns about, you know, people getting, you know, looking for artifacts and trying to find things. But I think there's been a lot of documentation in recent times about the search for pieces of the shipwreck. And so, you know, I think it's well-known within the community that there was a shipwreck on, on the coast in that area and the pieces are scattered up and down the spit, both in the city of Manzanita and at the state park and up towards Short Sands and beyond potentially. And so we're just continuing to try to get more information about where the tsunami debris is located and where, you know, and where potentially some of those artifacts may be found. We're working with the Maritime Archaeological Association on that. We do have a staff archaeologist and we also have an archaeology consultant who are all working together on that. And then, I mean, obviously in addition to things like the shipwreck debris that may be on site, there are a lot of historic and prehistoric uses on this bit and, you know, and there are known locations that those occur in. So documenting those locations so they can be avoided to the extent possible is, you know, the goal.
Great. Second question I have is, are you gonna add any sites? I didn't, I might have missed that.
So in, in this phase of the work, so at this point, we are not expecting to add very many, if any at all. So originally, the GO bonds projects were proposed to include up to 15 camping cabins, which would be new, and up to 15 tent sites, which would be new. And then also, we have, I believe, eight hiker biker sites and it was potential to add up to seven more hiker biker sites. So that would have been 37 new sites total at the campground. All of those were included in the master plan that was adopted in 2008. At this point, we're not expecting to have the funding to add or expand camping substantially at the park. So probably will be primarily renovating the existing facilities and making the user experience better for the people that we have visiting the park, but we probably won't be adding. You know, we may be able to incorporate one of those projects to move it forward, but probably not, almost certainly not all of them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tracy, I have a question somewhat related, I guess, to the news you just shared, which is, was news to me. I, I thought there was going to be expanded sites. We're always at the city, we're trying to figure out where our visitors come from and what the numbers are and how that impacts the community. Do you have, this might be a Ben question, do you have a, do you have numbers that can help us understand how many folks on a regular basis are at the park? Particularly camping, I guess, not day use, but it would be helpful for us to have a sense of that, that number and also the fluctuation from season to season.
I know that we have a department that tracks that information and potentially can provide it. I don't know if Ben has more detailed information available.
You're muted.
You're unmuted.
Muted.
Ben, unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Better, better.
Okay, so I, I have some very rough data. So we collect, we collect this data and, or these data and ship them off to Salem. And as Tracy said, we have some folks that really parse that down and generate some good reports. We have standards we use in different locations with different types of car count or for, on average, how many people per vehicle we anticipate visited us in day use car counts. And then the same thing for overnight camping units. Unfortunately, we, I don't believe we're collecting any great data, at least we, historically for non-resident campers. In recent times, since the legislature mandated the non-resident surcharge essentially for RV sites, we might have better data on, on that, but, so I can get ahold of stuff if somebody wants to make a specific request. Just send me an email and then I'd have to reach out to our, our stats person to gather, to gather that information.
Okay.
I need time periods though and just specifically what's being looked for. And then I think it would probably be up to you or, or somebody that you engage as a consultant to interpret those data. You know, to extract whatever information you're looking for.
Right. Would you say though, that at this time of year, you're, you're at full capacity in the campground?
Yeah, absolutely, it's, we're definitely. The, we used to experience very definitive shoulder seasons and so late April and through May was considered shoulder season. After Labor Day and through October was considered shoulder season. Last several years, we've, we've pretty much been full board, at least Memorial Day through mid-September and that just seems to grow every year. But right now, the, the only way you get a reservation here or campsite here is if somebody cancels or leaves early. There's just, there's nothing to be had, the inventory is all locked up.
So what is a full house in the middle of the summer? What, how many people are out there?
So again, that just depends on how many people are showing up per campsite. But so in combination with our electric sites, our course camp sites are 18 yards. We have some fly-in sites at the airport, there's roughly 300 camp sites here. And so if you figured there were four people per campsite, you're looking at 1,200 people. Yeah, it becomes the second largest city in Tillamook County.
Right.
All right, thank you.
So one of the issues that we're facing in, in the city of Manzoni, first of all, we love to have your visitors and we love the partnership with the Haylen Bay, it's been great. But there, there often is excessive parking downtown. And I'm wondering if there is any thought or any way that there could be some kind of shuttle back and forth to downtown Manzanita or if there's any options that we might be able to look at that would alleviate some of that parking issue.
You mean parking for visitors of Manzanita that need an alternate location similar to what Pacific City is doing with Bob Straub?
Yeah, so we get a, we get a lot of, obviously, we want to get a lot of people from the Haylen Bay State Park. But we also have a parking problem downtown. And so I was wondering if you had given any thought to some kind of shuttle back and forth? Any kind of way we could alleviate some of that parking?
That's not, it's not really in the scope of the work that we're doing currently for our active projects. The only site that I'm, well, I mean, so there are a few sites statewide where shuttle programs occur. The biggest, the closest site I can think of is in Pacific City, but that's actually operated by Tillamook County Transit, the way I believe. So Tillamook County, I believe, developed, I, I assume they developed an agreement with us because they have a pickup site at Bob Straub. And so because Pacific City also has a significant parking issue, they've instituted a shuttle and identified parking areas and stop locations to help disperse parking so that people are parking in places where there is parking potentially available and then there's a shuttle that's looping through and taking people from site to site. But I believe that that's primarily coordinated by Tillamook County and not. I mean, while, while state parks has a couple of sites that are on the route in the area, you know, it goes to Wayland Island, Sika Sedge and Bob Straub and maybe the boat ramp too. But we're just a few stops along the way and so I, I think it would be a bigger conversation. And Tillamook County would likely be the transit source.
Okay. And then the, the last question, since you're going to be doing some fairly significant construction, are, do you look for local contractors? Is that part of the?
And so there is a resident contractor clause in our contract. Our contracting rules are established by DAS at the state level, so we have minimal control on that. But they do require reporting of local subcontractors and, and they want to know if contractors are residents or have a business license at least in the state. But we don't have the ability to look specifically for local contractors, it's just not within our legal, you know, we're just not legally allowed to by DAS. However, I can tell you that the, we had two bidders, or actually, we only had one bidder, but we had two contractors that were interested plus subs in the staff housing and they were all local firms.
Oh, good.
And so the, the awarded contractor is based out of a story, I believe.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tracy, I had a question about rates at the park. Are, are those, how, how does the rate go up or increase? Is there, I mean, there's got to be a process and, and when do you anticipate that something, that a different rate would kick in?
I'm going to defer that one to Ben because I'm sure he knows more about that than I.
Okay.
If I don't, I'll pretend. So rates are established by, we're a commission-led agency, so the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Commission, citizen appointees by the governor. So they, they are the, the body, the governing body that establishes rates. Rates are, in Oregon state parks are actually captured in Oregon administrative rule. So when we go to adjust rates, we actually have to go to rulemaking to do so. And so it opens up to public comment. The, 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 a couple of exceptions to that. So one is the non-resident surcharge that I mentioned. So that wasn't done through a, a public comment in Oregon administrative rule. The Oregon Legislature said, you're going to do this, make it so, and we did. And then I wonder exactly how long ago it was, it seems like it was 15 months, maybe as much as two years ago. We went to rulemaking and adopted flexible fees. And so you'll see from park to park across the state, a campsite type might cost a different amount of money at the Haylen Bay as it does at another park in the valley or in the mountain region. And so some of this was done to manage inventory, to give some lesser utilized parks kind of some, some steep discounts to draw people to those to kind of spread the love around the state a little bit. And then some of it was just, just strictly not, not shifting burdens to less visited parks, but just to manage inventory in, in existing parks. And so that is a, a principal revenue stream for us, so we have to watch the, the bottom dollar. Also, we're subject to transient lodging tax, so transient lodging taxes vary from, from taxing entity to taxing entity. So we include those in our campsite fees and then we typically round up or down and just make it a flat fee. Back many, many years ago, I remember we used to have to collect pennies and dimes and nickels and, and that was something. So we, we started rounding those. So we take a hit in some places and we come out ahead in some places, it all sort of shakes out in the wash. So the last, the last fees that were established were pretty recent. I can't say that we won't be going to rulemaking to change fees anytime soon, but that flexible fee rule that I talked about does give us the ability to kind of bump one way or the other seasonally or across parks without having to reopen rulemaking. So we have a little leeway. But if we wanted to do something like a $10 a night bump, that, that would need to go to rulemaking, very public and transparent process.
Okay, okay. And Ben, I have two things. You, you joined us at the Mayor's Monday a while back, which all of us enjoyed immensely. And, but I remember you saying two things. One was that it was hard to get employees and you had employee positions that weren't filled last year. How are you doing this summer? You have enough people working there?
No, it was better. So it was better this year, I was actually able to deploy, might have to look back at the records, I think, either three or four more than I got last year, but I've suffered three resignations. So, so I'm kind of right back in the same boat that I was in previously. So the staff housing project that Tracy talked about, the, the reason that that's a top priority is because housing seems to be the, the major barrier that we face workforce housing. And so we're hopeful, we don't know how many, exactly how many units that we're going to get out of this whole thing, but we're hopeful that, that that's really going to boost our numbers.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, good luck with that. The other thing was, and this is sort of out in left field a little bit, but you and I talked about the white markings on the pavement for crosswalks in a couple of places. Remember that? And you told me to remind you about it, you know, when the weather got better, because at that time it was raining a lot. Are you still, do you still have those on the schedule someplace? Because they're hard to see.
We've actually torched down some new ones in a couple of locations. Summer hit us and we, we, we got pretty crazy. We have it on the list to, to get to some other things, but I won't, I won't give you a whole long sob story or take up much of your time, but simple things that would seem like just easy demand maintenance or easy projects when you're, when you're at 33%, you know, staffing levels.
Right.
You almost have to build in a work schedule to repair a leaking toilet. It, it just becomes almost impossible to keep up with some of these tasks. So, you know, we, we have a list of things that we're, we continue to, we continue to plug away at. We, we've been able to get some of it done. Most of our attention this summer has been on trying to get Saddle Mountain reopened. That's been a, that's been a thing, a whole different conversation, so.
Good. Well, we support you in all ways that we can and, and we appreciate what you do and what you contribute to the community. Thank you for your time, both of you. That was a very in-depth overview, Tracy, and.
Too much information.
No, it wasn't, but it means that the parking in the boat landing area is still going to be bumpy for another year or two, it sounds like.
Yes. Yeah, it's probably a little longer than two, unfortunately.
A little out there, okay.
It's, it's another high priority, but, you know, that one, funding is a factor for all of our projects. We have a lot more that we, that we could do than we can afford to do on any given year. And, and the permitting scenarios associated with boat ramp are substantial with, with the estuary and the floodplain and the sand. Archaeology.
And that labor shortage that I experienced here that's more related to, to lack of workforce housing is not, as I'm sure you all know, not a phenomenon that's, that's isolated to us in the park here. So, you know, every entity out there, land, land use agencies and, and contractors and just everybody that employs people, it just seems like there aren't enough people to get the work done. And so, and of course, that drives up costs and it becomes a self-fulfilling problem, so.
Right. Well, thank you both for your time and Ben, you can join us any, any Monday for the mayor's meeting. So love to see you again and, and get updated, Tracy. Thank you, that was a great overview.
You're welcome. Everybody come back if you need us again, thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Bye.
Uh, okay, next on the agenda is the revenue diversification discussion. And Ms. Monica, you're going to take us through that, am I correct?
Yeah, just going to give a brief overview and let's get my PowerPoint up here. And then really, it's an opportunity for discussion among the councils to give staff direction on next steps. So I think Jerry is going to help facilitate some of that discussion. He was on the subcommittee that, sorry, I have multiple screens here, I'm trying to get this set up, to help facilitate some of that discussion today, so. Do you see my PowerPoint?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay. Great, all right. So I'm just going to kind of go through the highlights, talk about some things that we actually are already doing and the kind of four items that were looked at in detail and then really hand it over to Jerry and the council to discuss and deliberate, so. Let me stroke what's here, you're with me? All right. So I just pulled this straight from the report, but just as a reminder to you all and those in the community, what the challenges that we're facing here in many Oregon cities. So we're not alone, we're facing challenges too, but ours are exacerbated. We're facing challenges too, but ours are exacerbated by the fact that we have extremely low property taxes. I would also add high expectations of our community and the nature of our tourist economy. And the cities, I think, admitted over reliance on TLT. And I do think it's important to note that the, the folks that actually put the TLT in place, councils well before all of you, had the foresight to do so, because had they not, uh, we'd be in a very difficult position right now and certainly not able to provide the high quality level of service that we are able to now. And because the 7% of the 9% TLT, um, we get to keep for operations. And so that's what's allowed us to have a robust police force. Um, we're able to, you know, a short-term rental program. There's a lot of other things that we do at the city in terms of building and planning, and we just wouldn't have without that. So, um, while we're over reliant on it, um, it's actually been a really important and necessary and critical source of revenue. Um, but our expenditures are, you know, at the risk of outpacing revenue when you start to consider infrastructure. And I think that's really where the over reliance comes from is that we've not only used our transient lodging tax and property tax to support the operations, we've used it to pay for infrastructure and we haven't developed alternate funding sources for infrastructure. So, you know, that's noted in the report that the city has deferred maintenance and under invested in infrastructure. And then we're facing growing service demands due to tourist traffic and inflationary costs. I think just even having our partners from Nahalem Bay Park here. There's a lot of people that go there that then come into Manzanita. And we're grateful for that, that they do have an impact on our system. So to face that challenge, I like to face the challenge, I think all of you do too. The city identified a need to explore new funding. So we hired, I think, one of the best firms in the state, if not the best, to help us look at what is the range of auctions. And I think that we'll find, as many cities do, that there is a limited range of options for us, particularly when we're handed in by state law that doesn't allow us to adjust our property tax rates. And again, being, I think, we're the third lowest property tax in the state of Oregon, that has some big impacts for us. So we're interested in revenue sources that balance what current residents pay. So not just requiring that of current residents and second homeowners, but how do we start to look at those day trippers? And getting revenue out of that, we can't close the ocean, so we'll always have people coming to visit Manzanita and we want that. Our businesses and our community requires that and they're moving their visitors. And so we want to understand the revenue capacity and the administrative aspects of these revenue alternatives. So this is actually the whole laundry list of items that was in the report. And just for folks that are watching, that's posted on the city's website as an attachment for today's meeting. Um, but there's several options beyond the four that were discussed in detail. There, there's a water rate mechanism, so that'd be a surcharge on water usage for non-primary residents, seasonal structures, higher rates, um, or other structure that would shift the burden from residents. A general utility fee, paid parking, that's asterisk because that is one of the four that Echo looked at in more detail. Uh, franchise fees, um, currently the Nahalem Bay Wastewater Agency uses our rights of way for free. That's from what I understand from free fee experts, that has been the case in the past. But more and more cities are actually working towards or have implemented franchise fees on special districts because of the, the lack of opportunity for revenue. We currently have a 5% franchise fee, for example, with Tillamook PUD. Tillamook City charges seven. So that's just something that council can consider as well. Levis, we'll talk about that in the context of general obligation bond. Uh, food and beverage tax was another one of the items that was discussed in more detail. Reevaluation of public safety IGA, so actually Chief Parth and I are working on that this year. We'll be working actually with Nahalem and Wheeler on renegotiating that IGA. Those expired the end of next fiscal year. And then this concept of a special district. In addition, uh, there are other things, so system development charges. The staff has been working on that since I got here. You'll be considering an increase, a resolution to increase the stormwater system development charge in September. That's been in the making for some time. And as you know, we had to update our SDC ordinance to be compliant with state law. So we're on top of that, but there's also been discussion of doing a transportation SDC. And Dan and I have actually already been working on scoping, review and update of the water SDC. So staff is already working on those items. The fourth item that the consultant looked at was this concept of a transportation utility fee. Bay City has this right now. It's a $12 fee and the road in front of my mom's house just got paved, uh, this week. And I think in large part due to the funding that was raised through that fee. Uh, the construction excise tax, so this is a tax that can be placed on the, it's 1% of the permit value, so this is a development fee. A state statute does require that the majority of those revenues be spent on housing-related incentives and affordable housing programs. So I actually helped implement this in my last job. And we actually raised a ton of money. I don't know that we would have the same experience here, but it is something to consider. You can do it by ordinance. And we were, at that time, it was 50% has to be put towards affordable housing and 50% can be used for other things. And we used it to fund SDC waivers. So we would waive SDCs for the construction of affordable housing and then use that money to backfill the SDCs and they could be used for developer incentives too. Um, stormwater utility fees, so currently, right now, folks that are hooked up to stormwater system don't pay anything. Um, so utility fees would help cover those capital costs related to that utility provision. And finally, permit fees. Um, these can be on new construction, which help pay for staffing to process building and planning permits. And, you know, Scott actually has done a really outstanding job making sure that our planning fees are updated, updated annually. We're working on a master fee schedule. And then we're actually working with Dan as well to, um, both update and create fees for certain public works permits. So a few of those things staff's kind of undertaking already. But the four that were looked at in detail, uh, I've just sort of cut this from the document itself, was the general obligation bond to, bond to finance transportation, the transportation utility fee, the prepared food and beverage tax and paid parking. Uh, this chart really looks at kind of what the needs that would be served under these, how they would be done. So for example, a GO bond would require voter approval. Transportation utility fee can just be done, um, I believe by just resolution of the city council. Prepared food and beverage tax can also be done, um, by ordinance of the city council. And then paid parking, um, you know, it's also something that can be just a council action. Um, identifies kind of who pays for these things. So obviously a GO bond, property owners pay. Transportation utility fee would be those paying whatever utility fee we put on. So if it's the water bill, it's that. Prepared food and beverage sales tax, it would be all consumers. And then paid parking would be visitors to paid parking zones. And then kind of who are the indirects? So business patrons and overnight visitors and short-term rentals may pay indirectly for a GO bond if they, the owners charge higher rates to help cover them. Uh, same with the transportation utility fee. Consumers for the prepared food and beverage sales tax and then visitors primarily would be paying parking. So we ran all of these through sort of a matrix to understand, uh, this list here. So funding capacity, does it address cost pressures and help the city meet its financial needs? And kind of ranked these sort of high, medium and low. You can see that a GO bond would be high. It would definitely maximize our ability to implement projects and do them quickly. Transportation utility fee, you know, we anticipated approximately 200,000 a year for transportation-related projects. Definitely nothing to, uh, look down on. That's a good amount of revenue. And prepared food and beverage tax, 400 grand a year is what we had estimated. And then paid parking, it just depends on sort of the cost benefit. And also the setup, probably be lower revenue in the early years and then higher revenue as, uh, the infrastructure is paid off. And now that we also have a code enforcement officer, um, we would definitely see an increase in, um, revenue from citations. Also looked at stability, so does the funding fluctuate from year to year? The stability for a GO bond, transportation utility fee, pretty healthy, is stable. It just kind of stayed the same, but obviously prepared food and beverage tax and parking are visitor dependent. And so the rank is medium. And then fair price, two Ks. So, uh, property owners pay for a GO bond, but also overnight visitors indirectly if folks have short terminals. My transportation utility fee, same thing, but property owners would be the primary source of revenue for that. Prepared food and beverage tax, again, visitors, um, but also residents. And, you know, there's, I think, some perception of the negative effects on local businesses. I, I will note, I was just in Ashland's and I, on my last dinner with my daughter, noticed for the first time on a $65 bill that we had $3. And I just didn't even notice it and I tipped off that amount. So that's anecdotally what I've heard from a lot of folks. And finally, paid parking, it just depends on how much we charge. So flexibility was another thing that the team looked at. Uh, the flexibility of a GO bond is high, there's capital projects, there's flexible use. So we would need to identify what projects it would be used for and we should develop a campaign to do a transportation utility fee. That sort of medium, we looked at transportation infrastructure projects. And I can see that in the medium, high range really. I don't see why it would be less flexible. But if we dedicated it just to transportation, I think there'd be a high level of flexibility there with that. Prepared food and beverage tax, capital projects, and that can also be used for operational expenses. And then paid parking can also be used for both. Administrative ease, that's something that matters a lot to me, um, just because sometimes tools can take a lot of effort. So example of GO bond and the tough, uh, the transportation utility fee, it's, uh, that's pretty easy. So high in terms of its ease, um, it's, it's easy to do. The prepared food and beverage tax, that would take some more effort, as much like the transient lodging tax. We would be monitoring that, doing collection, have, um, some backend work on our side to, to do that as well as supporting the businesses in taking on that new approach. And then paid parking, um, it's not easy to implement and it requires ongoing enforcement. So there is a bit more, uh, overhead. I think once the system's underway, that becomes a lot easier. But setting up the administrative aspects of that is not easy, but it's also not hard. It just takes time. Uh, neutrality, so does the option influence or create unintended consequences? So for, you know, it sets a rate for property owners and utility bills are higher. So those are things to think about. There's some sense or perception that, uh, prepared food and beverage tax may influence consumer behavior. And for paid parking, there's potential for avoidance and enforcement issues. And finally, implementation ease, so how easy is it to implement? For GO bonds, it's, it's not as easy as some of the other things. But it would require voter approval. So that's timing and getting all that information together. Um, it takes time and effort. Transportation utility fee, it requires a rate setting and system development. So, you know, that actually I don't think is that difficult to implement. Um, the prepared food and beverage tax, this actually should have been updated. That can actually be done by council via or by ordinance. So it should be, I would say, medium. And then finally, um, paid parking, it requires the system and enforcement. And then I would also say it requires some study before we actually implemented something. Um, so that's what I got. I think at this point, you know, you guys have had plenty of time to review and study the results. We've had many conversations on this. So at this stage, I think I'll hand it over to Jerry, but what staff's really looking for is, you know, direction from this council on what, if any, next steps you would like us to take beyond what we're already doing.
Okay, so, um, first I want to thank you, Leila, for the report and certainly Eco Northwest for their report. This process started quite a while ago, actually had its roots before you got here, Leila. But soon after you got here, uh, Steve Nuttall and I, uh, talked to you about, uh, an ongoing conversation that, uh, we were having, uh, involving, uh, Randy Kugler, uh, as well early on, uh, about the need to diversify revenue sources in the community for, uh, multiple reasons. And I know there's a range of opinions on why we need diverse revenue sources. But we don't need to go into those right now. I think what we need to appreciate is that all four of the options that have been, uh, studied in some depth by Eco Northwest, if we were going to pursue any of the four, they would require individual timelines, different prerequisite steps. All would require significant community outreach and education. And each of those outreach campaigns would have to be specifically tailored to the unique, uh, nature of the four options. So when I look at the four options, I don't see anything on that list that, um, doesn't intrigue me, that doesn't, uh, make me want to dig deeper and, and look harder at whether or not uh, we could implement, uh, the four. That's just one council's opinion, other people on council may disagree, but, uh, for me, all four are worthy of further exploration. And I think what we real, what I would really need now from staff is sort of a overriding roadmap to show us the timelines, the four different timelines that we would have to, um, pursue, uh, in, in all four cases and also outlining, uh, the various steps. Take, for example, paid parking. Before we can educate the public regarding any proposal, uh, for paid parking, we probably need a parking study. So, you know, each of those four options have sort of built-in prerequisite steps. Each of them have their own timelines. If we were to do a, uh, transportation utility fee, I suspect we could do that a lot quicker than we'd be ready to pursue a, a GO bond, for example. The GO bond, we can't go to the voters until we have a very specific and detailed shopping list of what, uh, that money would pay for. So although I think you're right that we have been studying this for a while, we've been kicking around, we've been talking about it and, uh, we've, we've gotten to this place with a, uh, very good report. Uh, I suspect we're really at the beginning of, uh, the process as opposed to the, the end of the process. And so for me, as a counselor, I would, I would love it if you could come back to us and say, with these four options, these are the four separate and overlapping, uh, timelines that, uh, you need to, uh, uh, expect to play with, within. These are the prerequisite steps for each of these four options. These are the community resources that we can, uh, bring to bear on, on each of the four. For example, we, uh, we've used, uh, Subcommittee of the Budget Committee earlier in this process. Uh, Dave and Chip and myself. Perhaps we can deepen the bench further, maybe we need to add to that Subcommittee. Maybe we need to use that Subcommittee in particular on one of the four or all four of the four. We also shouldn't overlook the fact that there are other possibilities on the list that you talked about that Eco Northwest did not, uh, do the deep dive on. So. So it, I don't know how quickly you can produce that for us, but I see laid out before us here, if we're serious about pursuing revenue diversification, I see easily a 18 to 24-month work plan where we're going to be able to do some of them sooner, and others are just going to have to mature over the course of that timeline. And if you're able to provide that to council, I think we're able to then figure out what kind of community outreach and education we need to do, on which issues, at which point in time. And we can carve out the role of the budget Subcommittee to help council. We can bring other citizens into the mix to help with different pieces. But we really need, I think, personally, I think we need a sort of overarching game plan to plug our different efforts into. And I don't know if that's something you can pull off relatively quickly. I think, I think the Eco Northwest report, essentially embedded in that report are some of the things I'm talking about, some of the, you know, the staggering of the approaches and the prerequisite steps that are required from one approach to the other. So hopefully you can pull that together relatively soon. And then, of course, I was going to say, we should hear from others, because I may be the only one who's a fan of all four. And I would think we're, I honestly don't think at this point, at this work session, we're in a position to throw any to the curb. But I do think that others may feel differently about the list. But could you just respond to what I've proposed?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, and I think that's actually great direction. I don't think anybody expected us to get a clear idea on which one of these to choose. But what I can do is develop separate timelines for each of these. You know, staff doesn't have a capacity to run all four of these concurrently, staff being me. So part of, I think, your decision-making will be looking at sort of level of effort, a cost-benefit analysis, and then, you know, I think it'd be incumbent on the council to prioritize that in light of launching our comprehensive plan. This in itself is a full-time job. So I'm more than happy to put together a timeline. I do think that the, a lot of what you're talking about is already kind of baked in here, but I appreciate the desire to see how that shakes out with respect to the steps and the timing, and have a little bit more, little different display of that. So I think I can do that in pretty short order. I'll endeavor to have it, I was going to say September, but I think October would be more realistic for me on the work session. If I can get it done by September, I will do that. But I don't see why that should be a problem, and I think it would be helpful for the council to have to better understand, you know, which of these, depending on the outcome of your conversation today, the folks may have opinions on which of these four are more appetizing or not, but I think that would be helpful, and I'd be glad to provide that.
So, so one of my issues in looking at these, first of all, I agree with Jerry, I think at this point, all are on the table, but, but the issue, and I'm assuming this is part of what you would do, Leila, is, you know, there's some real cost to implementation and maintenance to some of these. There's, there's a balance between the revenue that we can receive, say, from parking and the actual setting it up, the infrastructure, all of those kinds of things. And it may be a great idea, but there's, there's more information that we need in order to move forward. So I'm assuming that when you would do that, that would include gathering all of the data that we would need to make those decisions. And then the second issue I have is that this is really, we really need a lot of community input on this. I mean, I think it's educational and outreach and kind of getting a feeling for what people are willing to do and interested in doing, and also to, to talk about the complexities of the issues and where we need it and why. So I think if we can have the full information and begin to think about how we're going to do an outreach to the public, I think I would really support that, and I've supported all four.
Brad, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm curious how we got to these four. When I look at the other options that we were presented, and you kind of went through them, Leila, I'm curious about like the construction excise tax, that seems like a pretty, I don't know if it's easy, but it seems like a potentially popular way of getting some revenue. And I don't, I don't totally understand the franchise fee as well. But I think that, for me, the paid parking is tricky. It seems like there's a lot of, there's a lot of loopholes in parking in Manzanita, including parking down on Ocean, and what the effects of having meters or whatever we choose in town, driving those visitors into neighborhoods, which we already hear a lot about visitors in neighborhoods. So the parking one seems to me to be, to be a big challenge. The geo bond, I'm not really sure how I feel about that one. It seems like there's quite a few of those coming up in our community, and I don't know what the, how much it would cost per household. I don't know if we're, I don't know, that one, that one seems a little, seems like a lot of work as well. The transportation utility fee seems really doable and very reasonable to me. And the food and beverage tax also seems very reasonable and doable as well. So I'd probably like to see our efforts focused maybe on those two, rather than some of the more pie in the sky type of choices. So that's how I feel.
I, I agree with you, Brad, in that there's a, there's a point that consumers can, I mean, residents here can absorb. We have the medical facility increase, we have the, I think NCRD is coming up with needing some more money. I believe there's a county communication systems update through the, like the fire department, water rates are increasing. So one of the things I would hope, Leila, to look at too, is are there optional ways to impact the citizens, the full-time residents here, less under any of these programs? I think Newport did a food and beverage tax, but they only ran it through four or five months in the summer, so that residents could enjoy meals out certain months of the year without paying that additional tax. And I was curious too, when, when a geo bond comes before us, are those funds designated specifically to certain projects? I mean, I think Cannon Beach did 50%, oh, on their food and beverage, 50% of the revenue goes to the fire department, and 50% goes to the construction of the new city hall. So I'm curious about what, what restrains could be, or latitudes can be put on each one of those options. But I agreed with Brad, I had made a note too about the infrastructure and the franchise fee, I was, I was curious about if we, if we go from 5% to 7%, how difficult is that? What steps are needed to do that? I was also curious if, if there's a point where we look at, and it may not fall here, but cutting expenses, for example, that's under, obviously, the Budget Committee, but as we, as we keep raising things, I just, I'm wondering if there are some places that consideration has been given to, you know, well, maybe we don't need this anymore, maybe we can do this tax and in the process, take away this other thing. I'm just kind of curious if that goes into part of the thinking when you look at pulling these pieces together.
Well, I'm going to answer that, I'm going to take a shot at that, because I don't think it's, it's a council decision whether or not we're going to raise revenue through any of these means.
Right.
And council is inclined to put effort and energy into significant cost reductions through reducing services, and the council should be responsible for initiating that conversation, having it with itself and with the community. But I will say that hearing the concerns raised by Brad and yourself, to me, is just a validation of the fact that to pursue any of these four, there are a lot of questions that need to be worked out, and that's why we need a process and a plan to move forward so that we can kick the tires on all of these things in a way that answers some of your questions. I think you both referred to the fact of, you know, will the voters be able to tolerate or be interested in a geo bond? Well, yeah, that's exactly part of the calculation that any smart council is going to include. And so we're not going to go through a process and put before the voters a laundry list of projects with prices attached that we don't think are critical to the city and that are supportable by the citizens, and that we would expect the citizens to support. If we, if we don't do our homework, if we do it sloppy or quick, the voters will let us know. But I also think we need to start being honest with our residents. I mean, to immediately wonder if residents should get a break on a food and beverage tax. The study we have done, the study we are looking at, is essential to us in large part because we live on other people's money in this town. The residents in this town do not pay a significant share through their property taxes to support the operation of this town. And so if our first response to any opportunity or effort to diversify income is, how can we shield the residents? Then we are just feeding into this perpetual, perpetual need to have other people pay our bills. Now, the flip side of that is the gas tax that we get from the state, our share of gas tax from the state is based on the very small number of people who live here on a full-time basis. Our roads are obviously traveled on by a whole lot of other folks. The visitor numbers that we heard from, from the state park people a little while ago, the visitor numbers that are in the Eco Northwest report indicate that a whole lot of other folks are driving on our roads and wearing them down and beating them up. And our cut of the state gas tax that's collected is based on our residential population of 600. If we can't figure out a way to get some money from the day trippers, from the visitors to help pay for the costs that they impose by being here, by using our roads, among other services, then we're going to continually be in this, in this bind. And so I don't, I, I agree that looking at the four, it's easy to say that there would be problems with parking, that's exactly why you would do a parking study first, and you wouldn't roll out any kind of a community education plan on a parking proposal until you understood the facts and had a solid plan forward that did protect residents versus visitors in terms of where the parking is and who pays for it. But those are the kinds of serious details that need to be worked out in a deliberative process, and I think each one of these opportunities calls for a, its own deliberative process. I am a little discouraged though, to think that, you know, that we don't start from the premise that something isn't quite right here. We have, if we did the food and beverage tax, and if it brought in the money that Eco Northwest projects, it would be bringing in almost twice as much as we are currently getting from residents on their property taxes. That's astounding. I mean, you know, if we're able to almost double our property tax intake from a food and beverage tax, then that tells you two things. One, we should pass the food and beverage tax, and two, something is fundamentally wrong with how our tax system is structured in this town. We can't change it, you know, we're stuck with measures 5 and 50, and we're trying to figure out a way to diversify the revenue so we're not as reliant on short-term rental income as we've been. And I agree that there are other things on the list that might be worth looking at. And, and one of the first things that appealed to me, I remember early on in this conversation, was the construction excise tax. Because when I first moved back to Oregon in 2017, it was actually a ballot measure on, in Tillamook County to increase the, or to impose a excise tax on construction, specifically to fund affordable housing. And the voters rejected it. So it's a good idea that just doesn't sell with a lot of folks, unfortunately. But it's also a good idea that produces revenue that has a dedicated item that we can spend it on. We can't use that money as freely as we could use the food and beverage tax, for example. So I guess I just want to, you know, if you view this as the start, or at least the early stages of a long and complex project, I don't, I think it's wise to raise all the questions I've heard, I think they're all valid questions, but raising those questions to me just sort of validates the need we have to pursue these carefully, thoughtfully, deliberatively, and independently of each other.
Yeah, I think that's, that's part of the work with Leila, to get the data, so that we better understand the decisions. It doesn't mean that we're going to do all of these things, and it doesn't mean that we're going to ignore things that we've been doing before. I had a little help, actually, earlier today in talking about the TUC, and it's more complicated than it looks. I mean, it looks like it's really simple, but in order to make it fair, there's a lot of work that goes in, a lot of thought and work that goes in to the complexity of that. So what may look simple is not always simple, and until you have the data and you compare the, what the administrative cost, the amount of staff work, the infrastructure to put it in, and you balance all of that, it's very difficult to make a decision about any of these things. And I think what Jerry is suggesting is absolutely the way we should go. Let's get data, and at the end of that, maybe a geo bond is not what we want to do. Maybe, maybe, you know, I don't know about including the construction excise tax, but maybe that should be, should be added. I think we, in a year and a half, we should have a very good idea, and maybe sooner, of those things that we can implement that make sense for our community. But you can't do that unless you have all the data.
And certainly, anything that's going to require voter approval is going to be a couple of years out.
Absolutely. And, you know, and part of that, which Jerry also alluded to, is kind of bringing the community along. I mean, we've been, we've been relying on the visitors, and we've had the lucky option to have visitors pay for most of our, of our services, and it's not good for any organization or city to rely as much as we do on, on the visitor's tax. So I think it's really important, it's going to be a whole new world, but it needs to be fair and equitable across.
And transparent.
And transparent, absolutely transparent.
Actually, speaking of transparency, I suggested to Leila, and I think she was receptive to it, to creating a page on a website to house both the Eco Northwest report, but to also lay out if we do. page on a website to house both the Eco Northwest report, but to also lay out if we do end up with a matrix to sort of provide a overarching framework for how we're going to move forward on this, to lay that out and to really be able to direct people on a regular basis to that page. We're going to have a near constant effort to educate the community about all of these, both because they have their own intricacies and complexities, but also because people don't like to pay taxes. And people like to get stuff for free. And we have to start being honest with people about what stuff costs and how we have to pay for it. And I think we can organize this information pretty clearly on a on a website and use that as a platform throughout this this process.
So thank you, Jerry. Brad?
Jerry, I don't want you to misunderstand what my comments were at the beginning. I thought we were kind of saying which ones we were interested in pursuing. I agree with you a hundred percent as far as the timeline and maybe all of them come to fruition at some point. But I think in terms of expediency, it is important that we focus on the on the taxes and fees that we can implement sooner rather than later. I mean, if we're talking, you know, for me, if we're going to talk about these things, it seems that we are kind of thinking about doing them. And in doing so, which can we get, what can we get to the table? Which ones can we check off and move forward on? And that's where I was directing my comments, that from my limited knowledge, some of these appear much easier to implement, to get going and to put in place than some of the other ones. And that doesn't mean that we don't look at the other ones. But if we're going to focus on all of these things, it seems almost overwhelming versus picking some of the ones that seem more reasonable and easier to implement and that we can get into place sooner rather than later. So.
Yeah, and actually, that was exactly my conversation with Leila yesterday about this. I started the conversation by saying that while this full list looks appealing to me, pending further investigation or review, I think if we put it all out there on the table right now, it is overwhelming and it does lead to more confusion than clarity. So that's why I'm hoping that we have a roadmap that sort of breaks it out, which will in fact accomplish exactly what you're talking about. Because if the roadmap does what I think it will do, it will, it'll prioritize things, not necessarily in terms of what's going to get us the most revenue or what is the easiest to implement, but it will prioritize necessarily in terms of timing. If one of these four necessarily can happen a lot sooner than the other three, that'll come out in what I'm asking Leila to do. And so we'll see that and I think it'll sort of direct us logically. I honestly, I think it's it's time to have the full conversation with the community, but to stagger the specifics of that conversation as we go forward, opportunity or option by option. And I think some of that conversation, you know, has been, has been going on. I mean, you know, we didn't, it wasn't fun for us to raise the water rates, but we talked about it. We talked about it a lot and we thought we had a good plan and we think we have a good plan. And we're, you know, it's in place and, you know, we didn't, it's, some people didn't like us raising, you know, the the SDCs as we did on storm drains that's coming through. So you know, we're, we're ticking them off one at a time. I think on this particular list, we just need to have an overall game plan in mind as we go forward. We don't want to do a piecemeal, you know, we have a comprehensive fiscal challenge, the same way we have a comprehensive plan challenge. And we don't want to fix the comprehensive plan in a piecemeal fashion. And I think this is somewhat similar.
So in recap, Leila, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're going to do a recap of those four proposals from Eco Northwest. I would think October would be a reasonable timeframe. September looks like it's just around the corner. Could I ask, would you also, you mentioned system development charges that you and Dan have been working on and have certain, a couple of things already in the works? Would you be able to include those to show us what has already been started? So that we have that information as well?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, the SDCs are before you in two weeks, three weeks for storm drain and it's water and transportation. So I can sketch out a
What the timeline?
Timeline for the water SDC update and the, what I hope will be the transportation system update. So yeah, sure, I can do that.
Is there anything you want to add to the conversation in recap?
You know, the only thing I would add is, thank you for the opportunity, is I think that what council is asking is makes a lot of sense to me. I think kind of understanding the complexity and the timelines associated with each of these and then having some meaningful conversations with the community once you have that information, because that will also inform your decision making as to which of these tools that you want to pursue. So I think this is really valuable and useful feedback for me because then I can put together the materials that you need to have those important conversations with the community. Because I think we all ultimately know that successful public policy is made when it's founded on good public engagement. I think the other thing I would just add for your consideration, and you're probably already thinking about this, is your expectations. What you want to accomplish so that we have some pretty big ticket public works projects that need to be done. And I'm not talking about water, I'm talking about roads and storm drain. And even with the updated storm drain SDC, we're a decade away from doing any kind of really meaningful project work. And so thinking about what tools you want to put in place should align with your expectations on what projects you want to get done. So I think that's just something as you're evaluating that and having conversations with the community that we're as a, you as a body, we as staff are being really clear with folks about what can reasonably be accomplished. And that really ties to our ability to get funding and financing for key projects. And so I think that's just an important factor to think about as you evaluate those. So I think it's a great tool. I mean, I hope maybe there's some opportunity for you to use it in your outreach, outreach meetings that you all are having with the community. Staff can certainly put that together. We can start a bare bones sort of webpage right now and just get the, I'll work with Josh over the next couple of weeks to get that up and running now. And then we can just add to that as we need to, just so the information's easily accessible and available. But as we get more, we'll put it up there. But I feel like I have a pretty clear direction to look at those, at least those four.
Okay.
Staff will continue to do the work that we're doing on fees that we would do anyway. So we'll keep working on that and we'll be before you with IGAs and things of that nature. But if, if there are other things on that list that aren't as difficult to do or you have curiosity about that, it would be helpful to hear that or in subsequent meetings, we can, you can bring that up as well. But I don't want to lose sight of some of those tools that are there because there's I think there's some there there.
Leila, are those the issues that you, the list that you showed us prior to the, to the list from Eco Northwest? Because I'd like to see.
Yeah, it's exhibit six in the report. It starts on page eight, so for you and for members of the community. And so that includes a whole range of other tools that, you know, you can think about. You know, CET came up a few times. You can actually do that by ordinance, it doesn't need to go to the voters. Just from a timing perspective. And, you know, I can maybe even have some rough back in the envelope numbers by the time, maybe next time, to just give you a sense of what that could look like. We just need evaluation maybe from the last couple of years. And Scott probably can pull that pretty easily for me. So if that's the case, I'll get it to you. If it's not, I won't, but I'll do my best.
Okay, that, so one of the things that you mentioned has been something that I've been thinking a lot about. And that is, we're talking about increasing revenue, we're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about maintenance that we haven't kept up. I know we have a CIP that is pretty specific in terms of the amount of costs. But, but I, I'm thinking that you have a list in your mind of what over the next 10 years we need to do that isn't in the CIP at this point, that is, you know, because we don't have funding at this point. I'm wondering if we could have a list of broad topic or broad projects that you see as critical in the next 10 to 15 years that these monies would be targeted to?
Yeah, I think the CIP is a good starting point because that's a five year projection. That includes, so that includes just capital projects that we expect. I think with the passage of the TSP, there's probably a handful of smaller projects that we can include in that.
Okay.
It would take some, some effort on our part, but I could certainly, probably not by October, but work with Dan to start to forecast out. Because we're going, you know, we start, we start budget in a couple of months. Like we just ended it. So we start thinking about year six now. So I don't think that's, that's too difficult. I mean, really, you know, the majority of those projects are really, really already out there, right? The TSP, the Storm Water Master Plan and the Water Master Plan, like those, that's our project lists and those go out 20 years. Doing cost estimates is a bit like looking into the eight ball and, or the crystal ball. I was thinking the eight ball that my daughter has. It's like, will I make it through today's meeting? Looks good today. You know, so it's a little bit of, you know, those numbers are what we had at the time and they're the best numbers that we have. So doing those cost estimates does require quite a bit of work on our part. But if that's something the council is interested in and gives us time, we can, we'll do our best to pull something together. But just so folks know, like in terms of the capital project needs of the city, those are identified in those three plans. And there are cost estimates, albeit dated for some of them. You can just add an inflationary factor and get pretty close to where we think we might be. So if you would like me to do that, let me know. If that's satisfactory, that's great. But I'm happy to provide whatever you need.
Okay, let me look more closely at what we had. I didn't realize that we had the master plan for the storm water and water plan in there. So let me look at that first.
Thanks, Linda.
And I was curious, Leila, on, for example, one of the options in exhibit six was the permit fees on new construction. If we had a question about those specifically and where we stand in relationship to other area, other cities in our community and what, what a reasonable increase would be, is, would we direct that question to you or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, no, it would come to me because I actually work with Scott on that. And we're anticipating a discussion in January on the master fee schedule and any proposed changes we are going to recommend for that. So staff's actually already been working on that in our free time. And then there probably will be a handful of new and adjusted public works fees that we'll be recommending. And our hope is to do that, you know, to do a work session in January, get feedback, give us time if we need to come back, but have you all adopt those fees that would go into effect July 1st so that then I can incorporate them into my budget forecast.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Is there any other, thank you very much. Is there any other discussion about about the revenue diversification expectations or directions? Jerry, are you comfortable?
I am very comfortable, thank you. Just one quick plug for, and I know you're probably already thinking this, Leila, the utilizing that budget subcommittee. I think that to Brad's point, there are a couple of issues that even if we start working on them now, we can't really do the implementation realistically for quite some time. Those might be teller made for the subcommittee to do some preliminary work on while we move ahead on some of the lower hanging fruit. And I don't recall, do we have a quarterly budget meeting coming up anytime soon?
I think we're looking at September, October. We're in audit season now. Never end.
Okay, well. Dave and Chip will offline and just see if that group needs more help, if they're up for that kind of a role. I think there, I think there could be an ongoing opportunity there for them.
We'll note that for the next budget committee check in and we'll get on that.
Okay.
And it's a good reminder to get it scheduled.
Any final discussion or comment, Linda? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, I am. No, I think this was a really good start.
Okay, okay. Brad, are you? Okay, you're on mute.
Oh, good, thank you.
All right. And Leila, do you have anything to add? No, okay.
This is really helpful direction, so thank you.
Okay. Well, the PowerPoint presentation was really, really helpful and being able to, you picked up some of the, some of the points that I had highlighted in yellow as well. So we're kind of on the same page there. So thank you for your presentation and the time. Before we adjourn the meeting, unless I've forgotten something, I'd like to encourage registered voters to consider submitting an application for the open council position. The position will run until December 2024 and the application can be found on the city website. The open council seat is an unusual process here directed by the Manzanita Charter. The applicants will be asked to attend the September council, city council meeting, answer questions and sit before us while the council deliberates and then makes a very public selection of a member. The selected member then gets up from the audience and takes a seat at the table. So we understand that the process is a little bit daunting, but until we go in and make a change to the charter, here's, here's where we are. Please think about it.
One more thing, Deb, I need, I need your questions for the council.
I understand, I'm waiting for a couple of responses back. I was going to get that to you.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Uh huh, of course. And if there's no other discussion, then I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 3:25. Thank you.